Would everyone please take a seat?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. Could I please have Pastor Philip Jenkins from New Canaan Missionary Baptist Church come forward for the opening prayer?
Good evening. Let's have a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for each and every one that's present. And right now, we ask a special prayer on the proceedings of this night's meeting. We pray for the agenda. We pray for all those that are involved. And we want to pray for our city council and city council members, and that everything be done decent and in order. We thank you, and in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Commander Rayner, would you lead us in the flag split?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of January 20th, 2016. And Director Maloney, roll call, please.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Yeah.
Silveira?
Yeah.
Stonebrooke?
Yeah.
Here. Consideration of approval of agenda? Do I have a motion? Ms. Freya?
I'm moved to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Silveira?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Freya, second by Silveira to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Reorganization of city council, selection of mayor pro tem. And at this time, every year this is done, and we rotate, and at this time, I would like to nominate Mr. Silveira as mayor pro tem. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully decline and ask to nominate Councilmember Freya. Keep him on as mayor pro tem.
Okay. If that happens, council, then what we do is still continue with our rotation as it normally would, and then the person next year would then be the mayor pro tem that would normally have been the mayor pro tem. Are there any other nominations? I will close the nominations, and I will remove my -- I just lost it. I will remove my recommendation of Mr. Silveira leaving Mr. Freya. Okay? Do I have a second to that? Ms. Lewis?
Second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Thank you, Mr. Silveira and Mr. Freya. Thank you. You know, I forgot something. I didn't even ask you. Did I? If you wanted to do it again? Too late.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Too late.
So we should --
Okay. Public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. And just when you approach the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. And if you have a cellphone, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
Mary Anderson.
Oh, wait one minute. Mary?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. You're good.
My name is Mary Anderson, and I'm a resident of Los Banos. And I'd like to give information on the Alzheimer's and dementia support group that meets every third Wednesday of the month at noon at Country Waffles. We are current or past caretakers of spouses, family members or friends, and we share our experience of dealing with this dreadful disease or related diseases such as dementia. Some of us have had to place loved ones in a facility because we didn't have the necessary skills or the finances to hire someone to properly care for them. Others kept them at home whenever possible, often with great difficulty. We share our -- oh, I'm sorry. We need each of you to share your experiences. There are flyers on the back table and some at the community center if you're aware of anyone who could use our group's help. Thank you for your time.
Mary, would you please give a copy of that flyer to our Director Maloney, please?
The little flyers that I put up there.
Yes. Or Lucy can get one. Is there one back there?
There's -- I put a little stack of them.
Okay. Joey, would you bring one up to Lucy for us, please? Okay, we took care of it, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Hello, Mayor and council. Bertha Freya, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. I haven't been here a while, so I apologize. You're going to get a whole slew of information. Welcome to 2016, and we are looking forward to a busy and exciting year for the chamber. Our calendar is shaping up with our annual events as well as community events, which add the vitality to our city. We welcomed our new president, Sandy Lemus, first vice president, Eric Limone of Republic Services, and second vice president, Rhonda Lowe of The Office City. They bring with them a new energy to grow community events and build revenue for the chamber. We also welcomed some new directors, Debbie Perry of Guardian Angels, Eduardo Sandoval of Sandoval Bail Bond, Joy Mendez of Rico Fitzher and Pierce, and Michael Teas of WFG. We have scheduled our Spring Street Fair for Saturday, April 9th, in downtown Los Banos, and we have vendor applications available on our website as well as in our office. We will also participate with our annual beer booth at the Merced County Spring Fair, which begins April 27th. And we look forward, in our calendar, we will continue with a Father's Day event on Saturday, June 18th, and host a fireworks booth that will open on the 28th of June and continue through the evening of the 4th. And look to hold our Fall Street Fair, September 10th, and head to our Tomato Festival, which will be held Saturday, October 1st. We also have a full calendar of monthly mixers hosted by our Chamber businesses with our first mixer of the year going to be held Thursday, the 28th, with Berkshire Hathaway. Some upcoming events for January in the community are a mobile vet counseling center at the American Legion, 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. These services are offered free to eligible veterans on the first and third Thursday of each month, and it's made possible by our Los Banos VFW. Appointments can be made by calling 559-487-5660. The Los Banos Golden Ager's will -- their dinner will be held tomorrow, January 21st at the Community Center. These dinners are held on the third Thursday of each month, and dinners are $10 for members. Next week, Los Banos High School Choirs will hold their annual drive-through dinner at La Morita. That's the 28th. Beginning at 4:30, tickets are available for $10, which include a half chicken, rice, beans, tortillas. And these proceeds help the choir to attend the Central Coast Festival. Tickets are available from choir members or from their director. The Los Banos Kiwanis have also begun their Marie Callender Valentine Pie Sale to benefit their scholarship fund. Pies are $13 each. Deadline is February 8th for pickup on the 12th at the Miller and Lux Building. Contact Barbara at 826-7114 or Jim at 769-6703 to place your orders. Then, at the end of the month, Green Valley Charter School will host an art show Saturday, the 30th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 at 947 Sixth Street. This show is open to the public and will show the community what Green Valley has to offer and how the arts help integrate learning of other skills. Refreshments and some of the art will be available for purchase. And that covers it for the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Breezy, can we put on the public education channel the Mobile Vet Center and also the Alzheimer's Support Group? Okay. Thank you.
Eric Limone, resident of Los Banos, employee of Republic Services. Mine is not nearly as long as Bertha's, so I'll just save that right there. Man, there's a lot of power up here now with Mr. Breezy, and I'm glad to see it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to recognize a local commercial business that is absolutely superb in their recycling efforts. These individuals have taken the extra step to help our city's efforts to meet our state's mandated diversion goal, 75% by the year 2020. Four years ago, the state of California implemented a mandatory recycling program, State Statute AB 341, requiring all commercial businesses that generate four yards of waste and multifamily complexes of five units or more to have a recycling program. I'm happy to announce that our Merced County region has now reached 70% of our diversion goal, and we are well ahead of schedule. Doesn't mean quit recycling. Obviously, it's a region and not a city's effort. We, Republic Services, have placed education at the highest level possible. It is in our belief that we must continue to educate our students about the urgency to recycle for a better tomorrow. We have developed a war program that will contribute $500 to the Los Banos School District for a student scholarship program in the name of the winning business recipient. With that, I am proud to present a $500 check to the Los Banos Unified School District and recognize a biannual recycled war winner for 2015 for Starbucks Christina, and it's at the East Pacheco Boulevard location. She's not present, so I will not give her a reward nor a check. However, she does owe me a grande white mocha. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, John Cates, citizen of Los Banos and planning commissioner. I just wanted to publicly thank the mayor and the acknowledgement that you provided on the sixth council meeting that I was in Georgia for training and I missed. I really wanted to be here for that, and unfortunately, I missed it. But I wanted to sincerely thank the recognition and looking forward to my second term as planning commissioner and look forward to working with all of you to move this city forward and see what we can do to get things going here. But I wanted to just give you a public thank you and really appreciate it.
It was a council decision.
I know.
Okay.
Really appreciate it. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close the public forum and go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 157344 through 157486 in the amount of $974,237.03. Minutes for the January 7th, 2000 -- that should be 16 adjourned city council meeting. Minutes for the January 12th, 2016, special city council meeting. City council resolution number 5719, approving and accepting parcel map number 2015-02160 West Santa Barbara Street, APN 08118004 Village Green subdivision. City council resolution number 5720, adopting a revised budget for the 2015-2016 fiscal year as it pertains to expenditures in the special revenue fund, fire augmentation professional services account. City council resolution number 5721, authorizing the release of unclaimed checks pursuant to California Government Code Section 50055 to the city of Los Banos. City council resolution number 5722, approving an amendment to Division 5K Workers Compensation Reporting Policy of the City's Policy and Procedures Manual. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mr. Silveira?
No, Mayor. If there isn't anybody, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated by Director Maloney.
Okay. Ms. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item eight, consideration of the adoption of city council resolution number 5723, accepting the 2014-2015 fiscal year audit reports consisting of a comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, the Government Auditing Standards Report, and the Transportation Development Act Program Financial Statements. And for this, we're going to go to Finance Director Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight's staff is recommending that city council receive and adopt the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, otherwise known as the CAFR, and the accompanying reports that the mayor just mentioned. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report communicates the city's financial condition and activities for the year ending June 30th, 2015. The quality of the finance department's work and the CAFR is measured in two ways. First, by receiving a clean audit from the independent auditors who are here tonight, and second, by being awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the GFOA. We did apply for this award in 2014, and as we have stated before, we were proud that we did receive the award. We have applied for it again with this CAFR that you're about to go over this evening. We are anticipating that we meet all the program requirements again, and we will be notified later this year with the results. And of course, when we find out, we'll bring that information to council. But before we present the reports, I would like to say thank you to all my staff, including Kim, Rosemary and Martha, who are here tonight. They work very hard, not just when the audit comes around, but throughout the whole entire year, to make sure that we have a successful audit, and they do an exceptional job. Also, I'd like to thank Kristi Miller. She's on the audit team, and she worked with staff, and we're happy to have her here. She does a wonderful job, and we really appreciate it. But here tonight is Fausto, a managing partner with Price Page &amp; Associates, to give a brief review of the audit and the CAFR.
Council members, I did hear that brief, so I picked up on that. My pleasure to be with you tonight, and I do plan to be brief. However, as I go through this presentation, if there are any questions that you have, please feel free to interrupt me as I go through this or hold any questions to the end, whatever your preference might be. So I'd like to start with the Independent Auditors Report, which is page one. This is really a small book, 108 pages. The Independent Auditors Report basically describes financial statements that were audited for the year ended June 30, 2015. But then it also talks about management's responsibility and the auditor's responsibility. So management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Management's also responsible for internal control. And so our job as auditors, we're not a part of your internal control structure. You have a governance responsibility, and you engage us to do an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, also in accordance with government auditing standards. So we've conducted that audit. Our job, then, is to perform tests of transactions, of account balances, to assess risk. And although we're not a part of your internal control system, our job from an audit perspective is to obtain an understanding of the design and operation of internal control. What that means is that we will walk through various internal control processes and determine whether your controls are designed effectively. And if the controls are designed effectively, then we will walk through those controls to determine whether what we think should be happening is actually happening. So we do that in order to assess risk. Our job as auditors is to assess risk. Where might there be either errors or where might fraud occur? And so we have a brainstorming meeting at our office, myself, an audit manager supervisor, along with Kristi, who is a senior, and our staff people. And so before we ever show up to the city, we're already having this conversation, and we audit multiple cities and some counties, so we have some experience in this area. But again, our job is to try to think about what could go wrong, because the audit is designed effectively to determine whether there is any material error or whether there is any significant fraud. And so that is how we design our audit procedures. As has already been reported, I'm glad to just share again that you have received an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion also can be called a clean opinion. Basically, it states that your financial statements are in fact presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board issues rules, and your financial statements need to be prepared in accordance with those rules. And so our job is to determine whether the financial statements, whether the numbers are presented properly in accordance with those rules. An unmodified opinion then means, yes, your financial statements are fairly stated. And so we also issued a separate opinion that's called an opinion in accordance with a report on internal control and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. So your audit is not done only in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, which are the standards issued by the American Institute of CPAs, but also government auditing standards, which are issued by the Government Accountability Office. And as a part of the audit, we need to determine whether there is any significant noncompliance that might be material to the financial statements, what impact that might have. And so a result of our audit, not only is to issue the audit opinion, but then also to make you aware of any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control or any material noncompliance. I'm pleased to report that we identified no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control and also no matters of compliance that should cause any concern. So I don't plan to go through the financial statements in any detail. Again, this is a book. I'm glad to maybe point out just a couple of things that are changed and different from prior years. So if we can go to page 14, one of the big numbers that's on these financial statements that wasn't there in the past is towards the bottom of page 14, about the second or third line up, it says net pension liability. So there is a -- in that total column, you'll see a number $14.3 million. And so what that represents is your share of pension liability related to the PERS plans that you are in. So as you know, you're in a cost-sharing plan with PERS, and your share of that total liability is $14 million. In prior years, this liability was not reported because it wasn't required. So the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued a new pronouncement, said effective for year's end of June 30, 2015, this liability should be reported. And so there it is on your financial statements, $14 million. There is a detailed footnote with respect to that liability. Oh, it's note 10, and it goes for probably five or six pages. So we're not going to go into any detail with respect to that, other than maybe if we can take a quick peek at page 62, that shows what your liability is. So it shows the numbers that we just went over. And there's a little table there at the bottom of page 62 that this liability is an estimate, right? Actuaries calculate these numbers. So based on your current -- the current discount rate at PERS, it shows a liability for your miscellaneous plan of $7 million, for your safety plan of about $7 million. However, if the discount rate changed at PERS, if it went down to 6.5%, so they plan on a 7.5% investment rate. If that went down and they only made 6.5%, you can see what would happen to the liability. Rather than being $7 million, it'd go to $11.7 million. And in the safety, it'd go from seven also to almost over $11 million. Now, if the 7.5% rate is too conservative and in fact returns are greater than that and they made 8.5%, then certainly the liability goes way down. But this is, I think, just significant so that governments can know and how -- not how that's calculated, because again, that's a big, complex calculation, but that what would appear to be minor insignificant changes in their calculation could have a drastic impact on you. So I think that was the big, significant change in the financial statements. Last year, I think I talked a little bit about the general fund and how to read that financial statement and went over a couple of the enterprise funds. So I don't plan to do that again because time is short tonight, but I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. Again, my purpose was really to describe the audit process and what we did, and not so much to go into detail with respect to the numbers, because I know that you receive very good current financial information. I also would like to express our gratitude to Sonia and to Kim for their assistance in the process. As Kristi and I were driving here tonight, we were talking about how clean your audit is. So from an audit perspective, I mean, we give you a clean opinion, but a lot of organizations might receive clean opinions after posting five, six, seven, 10, 15 audit adjustments. In your case, we had no audit adjustments. So there really is a very sound structure here in place, and so I think that's certainly a credit to your finance team and also to other management and to city council for overseeing an operation that is running this well.
Thank you. Are there any comments by council members at this time? Well, oh, Mr. Freya, you go. Go ahead.
I just want to compliment our staff. Thank you for the excellent presentation.
Thank you, sir.
And compliment and thank our staff. They give us a monthly report, financial report, and they've been just doing an outstanding job, and we really appreciate it, and this demonstrates just how good a job they do and appreciate it very, very much. Thanks.
Thanks. I can't tell you how much I, number one, thank you for coming here tonight and saying what you had to say. I think the public needs to hear this, and they need to hear it on a regular basis. Public, it's no accident that this happens. It's not an accident. It's the result of hard work by a hard-working team, and this team functions well together. With having a budget that we have in the city of Los Banos, not only comes from a lot of hard work, but it comes from a lot of hard decisions. This city is probably in the best financial shape per citizen. This city is probably in the best financial shape per citizen that I know of. We have a reserve, and we have a pretty substantial reserve. But that doesn't mean that that reserve can stay the way it is, because we have infrastructure reserve, we have operational reserve, and these are some of the things that we're going to be reviewing at our mid-year budget review. And then we'll find out if there's any additional money to do added projects after making sure that the city is running well. And I think sometimes when I'm asked about the budget, and why can't you do this, and why can't you fund that, I see you have a reserve. Well, there are long-range plans, five to 10 years, that the city and the staff have laid out, and we're trying to accomplish those five- and 10-year plans. Then there is aging infrastructure. And as you saw last year, Mr. Facheen came to us because we had a burst in a water pipe, and that cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix, because our infrastructure is over 100 years old. So we're going to have expenses, and we have to make sure that we have the budget in order to take care of those expenses. So without belaboring, because I don't want my report longer than yours, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff of Los Banos for the ability to have the money when we need this money. So thank you again to all of you. And you did your job. You came here to find out if there are any flaws, and you found none. And so we are very happy with that. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Sonia, I also want to thank you and your staff for the diligent and hard work that you do continually. Thank you for the audit that you've done. I know it was pleasing to me to hear that other cities come up with a clean report, but without a lot of coaching and work, probably on your organization's part. And I want to thank our staff for the conservative watching of our finances. Certainly, things are beginning to turn around in the economy of Los Banos. But you know, I'm a little bit on the conservative side, and I'm kind of looking at the stock market as it's fluctuating in this day and time, and we don't know what tomorrow holds. So I want to thank you for safeguarding our finances and continue to walk in that direction. And it's, we just have to take it a day at a time with some things, because you just don't know what tomorrow holds. I mean, we didn't expect our economy to go belly-up back in 2008. And I'm glad that our staff has worked so hard to help bring us out of that state that we were in, and getting us to where we are now. So thank you again, Sonia, for what you do. Thank you.
Mr. Silveira.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I too want to pass a congratulations on to our staff, because I do think they do good work. I know that, I've said this before, year over year, that when I first came here, these audit reports were lengthy, and there was numerous findings. And I've seen it go from a bunch of findings down to clean reports. And so that's good. That's, to me, we always need to be cautious of, we always need to keep an eye on it. That's why we hire auditors to come in and check it every year, but it's one of those things that I can put on my list of things that I can, I can take it, that that's going to be done well, that they have a proven track record there. All the girls in the finance department, thank you to all you guys. So, Mr. Mayor, if there aren't any other comments, I'd like to make-
Oh, we still have comments?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. One other thing I want to mention before, Mr. -- you sure, Mr. Stone, you have anything?
No, I'll second it.
Okay. All right. One other thing I wanted to let them know is that you mentioned pension funding. And in talking to Sonia, we have a pretty high rate of funding, too, for our pension. And that's always a good thing, because when the pension funding gets down low, that means the city has to contribute more, and the employees have to contribute more to the funding, in order to make sure that the pension is alive and well. But this city has also done a great job in managing the fund. So there is a substantial amount of money in the pension fund when employees go to retire. And they're counting on that money to make sure that they can have the life that they had with their retirement. And as Mrs. Lewis mentioned, this was just an okay economy. It wasn't a great economy. It was an okay economy, and they amassed this kind of money. So just two things I wanted to mention. So we have a motion by Mr. Silveira and Mrs. Stonegrove.
I need to make the motion.
Oh, you didn't.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5273, accepting the 2014-15 fiscal year audit reports consisting of the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER, the government auditing standards report, and the Transportation Development Act program financial statements.
Okay, it's 5723.
Did I say something different? I'm sorry. Maybe correct that to 5723.
Thank you. Mrs. Stonegrove?
I'll second that motion, and I also want to echo the sentiments of the council and thank Sonia and her staff, Martha, Kim, Rosemary, for another excellent audit. We appreciate all the work you do, and are very fortunate to have all of you. Thank you.
Okay. It's been motioned by Silveira, seconded by Stonegrove, to accept consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 5723, as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Let's go on to item nine, public hearing. If your challenge and proposed action is described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 9A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of an ordinance imposing an express ban on marijuana cultivation, marijuana processing, marijuana delivery, and marijuana dispensaries in the city of Los Banos. Item 9A1, ordinance number 1142, imposing an express ban on marijuana cultivation, marijuana processing, marijuana delivery, and marijuana dispensaries in the city of Los Banos. This is second reading and adoption. And do we have a staff report? Okay, City Attorney Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is the second time this matter's been before you. It was here two weeks ago. We had a public hearing, and at that public hearing, you waived the first reading and you introduced the ordinance. We're going to go through the PowerPoint briefly tonight. Not quite as briefly as the gentleman before me, but we're going to try. The marijuana ordinance does exactly what that slide says it does. It's an express ban on cultivation, processing, delivering, and dispensaries in the city of Los Banos, in conjunction with medical marijuana. Just a brief review and background, I know we went through this last time, but I think it's important to understand. 1996, the California voters through Proposition 215 adopted or passed the Compassionate Use Act of 1996. And basically what that did is it took care of, and it wiped out criminal prosecutions and violations relating to possession, cultivation of medical marijuana for patients and primary Did not wipe out the federal law, which to this day still provides that possession and use of marijuana and sales is illegal on a federal front. In 2003, some cleanup legislation came around, and what that legislation did, it's the MMP, it established a voluntary identification program where certain folks who are eligible were issued identification cards and certified as qualified patients and primary caregivers. And that's kind of been the process to date, is you get your primary, or you get your qualified patient card, and your marijuana card, and you're off and running in terms of getting a prescription for medical marijuana. Subsequent to that, and in response to that, and the cities were trying to figure out after that how to really deal with medical marijuana dispensaries in their jurisdictions. And in 2006, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1028, which prohibited medical marijuana dispensaries in all zoning districts within the city. And that was done through the zoning powers and the police authority of the city of Los Banos, in determining what type of uses it was going to allow in particular districts within the city. And that was kind of the trend in 2006 amongst cities, was to exercise that zoning power to either prohibit dispensaries or to regulate dispensaries. Just as a note, those that regulated dispensaries, some of them got into a little bit of trouble with the federal government concerning medical marijuana still being a federal crime. That was, in 2006, that was kind of forward-thinking, and there were a number of cases that went up on appeal into the appeals court, and in fact, affirmed that cities had the power through their police authority and their zoning powers to determine that medical marijuana dispensaries could be prohibited within their districts in their cities. So that leads us to current. And in October of 2015, Governor Brown signed a trio of bills into law. One of them, Assembly Bill 266, Assembly Bill 243, and Senate Bill 643. And these are known as the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, and it's basically a complete overhaul of medical marijuana as we know it in the state of California. And it became effective January 1, 2016. It essentially governs the licensing and control of the medical marijuana business in the state of California. And it continues to provide criminal immunity for licensees, just like the Compassionate Use Act did of 1996. So it's not changing that, but what it's doing is it's trying to close up the loop on the business of medical marijuana. And so Assembly Bill 266 establishes a dual licensing structure for medical marijuana businesses, which would be dispensaries, delivery services, and cultivation, commercial cultivation. And what Assembly Bill 266 says briefly is that you have to have a dual license if you want to engage in one of those businesses, and a dual license both from the jurisdiction that you're planning on having that activity in, such as the city of Los Banos. And once you get that license, you then are eligible for a state license. So it's kind of a dual licensing structure regarding the business of medical marijuana in the state of California pursuant to Assembly Bill 266. Assembly Bill 243, all these bills do a little bit different, and they're a little kind of piece of the pie on medical marijuana. There's some overlapping, but they took kind of aim at different areas of medical marijuana. This one establishes, Assembly Bill 243, it's aimed at the cultivation of medical marijuana. And it's going to be administered by the Department of Food and Agriculture, and it's very complex, and it goes into the use of pesticides and all kinds of things in terms of cultivation, pollution, water pollution, all those kinds of things. And it's a very significant law in terms of the environment of cultivation. And one of the interesting things in that law is that it states that if cities do not enact by March 1st regulations or a ban on cultivation, that it will automatically be preempted by the state's authority, which is this very complex regulating, regulations of the actual cultivation of medical marijuana. So that's what 243 does. Senate Bill 643 then goes on and takes a swing at the medical marijuana doctoring business, and it takes a look at and regulates physicians. And it's going to be quite significant in terms of how physicians can write prescriptions, and who they write them for, and how many they write, and so on and so forth. And this bill goes on to recognize the local authority of cities to levy taxes and fees on medical marijuana businesses. So as Chief Breezy mentioned in his report last week, there are a number of adverse effects of the medical marijuana business that, and impacts to public health and safety. He went through them quite thoroughly last time. But suffice it to say, there are a number of, however many good things there might be with medical marijuana, there are a number of negatives, and those negatives are listed there, from odors, and violence, and trespassing, and theft, and robbery, fire hazards, some of which, if not all of those, which have been experienced here in Los Banos and in Merced County. So the reason we're bringing this to you now is because of the urgency of getting something done before March 1st, 2016. And without that action, part of your authority will be preempted by the state of California. Now, there is a cleanup legislation that's winding its way through that might change that, but as of tonight, that has not happened. And so staff is of the opinion that we do not want the state of California to be the sole licensing authority for medical marijuana, commercial medical marijuana, within the boundaries of the city of Los Banos. So what this ordinance does, it essentially bans commercialization of medical marijuana within the boundaries of the city of Los Banos. There will be no delivery businesses in or out of the city of Los Banos, be no commercial cultivation of medical marijuana in the city of Los Banos, there'll be no dispensaries or processing of medical marijuana within the city of Los Banos. For all of those reasons stated in that slide there. Currently, you have a, through your zoning code, and this is a zoning code, we're not criminalizing medical marijuana through this proposed ordinance. It'll still be decriminalized if you're following the medical marijuana rules, and you have your prescription, and so on and so forth. But what we're doing is through our land use authority, the ordinance is going to say the commercialization of medical marijuana is not going to happen in the city of Los Banos. So it, again, in all zoning districts within the city of Los Banos, dispensaries, delivery, cultivation, and processing will not be licensed and will not be allowed through our licensing, and it will result in criminal, or not criminal penalties, excuse me, civil penalties, and potential for civil nuisance relief to keep those activities from occurring. So this was all rolled out to the Planning Commission on December 9th. They approved it by a vote of, I believe it was five to one, to approve the recommendation of this ordinance to the City Council. Like I said, on January 6th, the same ordinance was introduced, took quite a bit of public testimony, and it was, the first reading was waived and introduced. What we're asking you to do tonight is open the public hearing, receive any testimony, close the public hearing, waive the second reading, and adopt ordinance number 1142, as written. I'm here to answer any questions. Commander Rain is here to answer any questions, should you have any. And I think that concludes the presentation for tonight.
All right. Are there any questions of council at this time? We'll open the public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration on ordinance number 1142, imposing an express ban on marijuana cultivation, marijuana processing, marijuana delivery, and marijuana dispensaries in the city of Los Banos. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at the public hearing?
It's Mayor and City Council, Pastor Phil Jenkins, Pastor New Candy Missionary Baptist Church here in town. Along with pastoring, I work for Merced Union High School District as an intervention specialist. And I work with your high school students, from freshmen to seniors, that are up for expulsion for substance abuse on campus, either being caught under the influence or selling or possession. And didn't know that this was here tonight, but while I'm here, I'm going to say that if Los Banos can, as you really consider, I think there's something you should really, really fight against. Our young people are seeing that this is being- Our young people are seeing that this is being, in other cities, other states that are approving, and so it's a hard fight keeping it off our school campuses, because our young people see there's nothing wrong with it, especially marijuana. It's medical, it's natural. We hear it all. I hear it every day. I work Monday through Friday, and I'm, like I said, I'm intervention specialist, I'm teaching and dealing with high school students on a daily basis. And it is bad. So, if Los Banos can stay ahead of the game and do the best you can in keeping it, in keeping businesses like that out of Los Banos, you will do a great service to the city of Los Banos. And I'm just saying firsthand, I know what I see on a daily basis, and I'm working with those students now. It's one of those bittersweet positions, I'm glad I'm there, but I hate to see them there. So, if we can stay ahead of that game, please do so.
Thank you, Pastor. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public hearing? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. And any comments by council members, or do I have a motion? Mr. Faria?
There's no further comment. I will move to waive the second reading of Ordinance 1142, as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second of motion.
Motion by Faria, second by Lewis, to, oh, excuse me, yeah, I'm the last one, thank you. To waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1142. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Mr. Faria?
I'll now move to adopt Ordinance Number 1142, as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motioned by Faria, second by Lewis, to adopt Ordinance Number 1142. Roll call vote, Director Maloney?
Faria?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Falota?
Yes. Motion carried. Let's go on to Item 10, Advisory to Public Notices, and there is no report this evening, is that correct?
I agree that I can do that under the city manager's report if you'd like.
Oh, well, go ahead and do it now. It's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I do apologize that these public notices were not included in your agenda, and I'll make sure that doesn't happen in the future. But we do have three notices. The first one is a conditional use permit for evolution collision. This would be for the location at 930 G Street, and what their request is for the operation of a spray booth for an auto restoration business. The second public hearing is for a conditional use permit for a Type 23 alcohol license. This is for Perezzo Brewery, located at 80 West G Street. And the alcohol license is for a small beer manufacturer who's requesting the use of an onsite tasting room. The use of a small brewery is actually a permitted use by right in the industrial district, but to have the use of the tasting room, they do need a conditional use permit, and they will be not only having a tasting room, but also the ability to sell, retail their beer that they're manufacturing onsite. That will be regulated by ABC, but the city of Los Banos will also have our own conditions and regulations as well. And then the last public hearing item is for vesting tentative tract map number 2015-04. This is for the Racket Club Estates. This is an existing, a previously existing subdivision in the city of Los Banos, where this is located, is adjacent to the Racket Club Fitness Center on Racket Club Drive. Currently, right now, there is improvements there. You see a street, a vacant street there. There is fencing, a stucco wall, and a wooden wall. This was a map that was previously approved back in 2000, and the property owner, since that time, let the map expire, but they have come back to see if they can get the map reapproved, just as it was previously approved for. So, it's for 14 single-family residential lots in the medium-density zoning district. This public hearing notice, as well as the two others, will be presented to the Planning Commission on Wednesday, January 27th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my public hearing notices.
Thank you. Let's go to the city manager report. Mr. Breezy?
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, thank you very much. I will start out by saying it is an honor, a great honor for me to sit up here amongst all of you again. It's already challenging, I will tell you that, but I'm surrounded by the people that you see here that are my fellow employees and department heads, and as much as a challenge as it is, it's going to be a great time, and we're going to have some, we're going to get some fantastic things accomplished because we do, and we are surrounded by such great employees. So, I want to say thank you for that. The IT Department and Public Works are working together to improve the quality of some of the televisions here at the council meeting, to make us look a little bit more HD as this process goes along. We hope to have it up and running for the next council meeting, but Rick and some staff from Public Works are working to improve the quality of the picture that you see, especially when we do the PowerPoint presentations. It may end up, might end up changing some of the appearance of the TVs as far as what is being viewed when we're not doing PowerPoints or presentations, but we've got to get through that. And it's a, it's just a, we're dealing with some old systems there, but we're working hard on that to get that accomplished. And last, I too would like to thank Rosemary and Kim, they're out in the audience, I see Martha over there and Sonia for the great work with their CAFR report. They're very tedious. As a department head, I can say very easily that they're tedious at their job. They look over and cross every T, dot every I, to make sure that the city's finances are in order, and they do an outstanding job at it. So, I too express my thanks for them. And that is all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
I kind of like the fuzzy look. It doesn't show some of my wrinkles. Okay, enough of that. All right, city council member reports. Tonight, we'll start Mr. Faria.
Rick, if you have a de-aging system there, it'll be great. The, just choir fundraiser next week, 28th chicken, half chicken dinner, and beans, rice, tortillas, la mojita. We use their, we do the drive-through there, through their, through their store in the back there. They're very generous. Also, our firemen cook the chickens, and they're very generous with their time and effort as well. So, typical of Los Banos, we have a lot of things going on for kids here, and the only reason they happen is because the citizens of the town, the businesses in the town, are so generous with their time and their money to make it all happen, and we appreciate it very much. Have a great evening.
Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Gary Breezy for his appointment as our interim city manager here in Los Banos, and I'm sure you'll have a lot on your plate to get us through as far as projects that we're working on right now. I feel that you're capable of handling this, and I look forward to working with you. And that's it this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Silveira?
Yeah, I too like to congratulate Gary, and I'm looking forward to moving the ball forward. I don't, you know, we're going to, this process, we're going to adjourn to closed session right after this, and we're starting the process of looking for a permanent city manager, and I don't know how long that's going to take. I know we have a timeline out there, a pretty aggressive timeline that we're hoping to keep to, but we'll see how that works out. So, my biggest concern all along, when, with Mr. Kerrigan's departure, is moving the city forward. We have no time to just sit back and, we don't need placeholders, because there's going to be things that are going to be coming our way over the next six to eight months. Decisions are going to have to be made on projects, and I just, I just want to keep moving forward, and I think you're going to do an excellent job with that. So, again, I wanted to congratulate the finance staff. It is, it is, it's just, it's nice. It's a nice feeling. It's one less thing as a council person that you have to focus all your time on, is our finance stuff. It's, it's smooth sailing. I remember these meetings when we did these audits, taking hours to go through them. So, that is kudos to you guys, Martha, Sonia, Kim, and Rosemary. Thank you guys so much, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Thank you. I too just want to welcome Gary Breezy back again, and thank you for stepping up to be our interim city manager, and looking forward to working with you for the next few months in this role again, as we pursue our search for our new permanent city manager. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. This last weekend was Martin Luther King's birthday, and we had a march here starting at City Hall, and then down Sixth Street, turning on, see if I can do this better than Pastor Bruce Rivers, and then turning on I Street, and then turning down Fifth Street over to the Art Center, where a number of topics were covered on Dr. Martin Luther King. And for the organizers, thank you for doing that, because these, again, these events don't happen for children, they don't happen for adults unless people step up and, and put these events together. So, without it, it's just not going to happen. So, thank you for doing that. Again, Gary, welcome. Sonia, and your team, thank you so much for what you've done, all of you. Can't say enough good things at, of what you've done for this city and to keep it financially sound. And, Mrs. Silveira, thank you for mentioning about moving forward, because we didn't hire an interim placeholder. We've got to move these projects forward. We have a projects list, and that list is on everyone's mind, and we are going to move these projects forward until they are completed, or we can't move them any forward anymore. So, and I hope that doesn't happen, but we are here to make sure that that's going to happen, and, and we have some great plans for Los Banos, but we need everyone working together. So, Chief, when you go to bed at night, think about that. So, other than that, I would like to adjourn to closed session, public employee employment, city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. If there's anything you report, we will do so at the end of closed session.